Good afternoon, calling to order the Glendale City Council at 4:05 PM on Valentine's Day, February... No, not...
That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow, okay, day before Valentine's Day, February 13th. I'm already planning ahead. Roll call, please.
Council members Asatrian, Divine,
Here.
Kasakian, Najarian,
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. May we have your report, please?
The closed session items are the following. Closed session item A, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Golanian, John Tachalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Paula Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford, Manny Sid, and Laura Kalti. The name of the employee organization is Glendale Police Officers Association. B, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Golanian, John Tachalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Paula Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford, and Peter Brown. The name of the employee organization is Glendale City Employees Association. C, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiator attending the closed session is Mayor Dan Botman. The unrepresented employee position is city attorney. D, conference with real property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Golanian, John Tachalian, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Garcia, and Gillian Van Miden. Property location approximately 3,720 square feet lot at the northwest corner of North Central Avenue and West Glen Oaks Boulevard, adjacent to 1015 North Central Avenue, APN 5636-007-903. Negotiating parties, Western Diocese of the Armenian Church of North America. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the sale of the city-owned property. E, public employee appointment, interim fire chief and fire chief. F, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Aljanian versus City of Glendale et al., LASC case number BC720314.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, we expect to be reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting out on 1E.
On 1E, okay, very good. And let the record show that council member Asatrian has arrived and is here after having battled some traffic. But with that, we will recess to closed session. Hey, good evening. Welcome to the February 13th meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:06 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Asatrian,
Here.
Divine,
Here.
Kasakian,
Here.
Najarian,
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. And now would you all kindly rise for the pledge of allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, but ruling in justice for all.
And please remain standing briefly for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. As this council meeting convenes on the eve of Valentine's Day, let us reflect on the universal love that unites us all. Inspired by this occasion, may we extend kindness and empathy not only to those with whom we find a natural connection, but to every member of our community. In governance, let us be guided by the wisdom of Maya Angelou who proclaimed, "Love recognizes no barriers. It jumps hurdles, leaves fences, penetrates walls to arrive at its destination full of hope." Let her words inspire us to foster inclusivity and equity in all of our endeavors, striving to build a city that embraces all its residents. Let us remember that love transcends boundaries of race, ethnicity, gender, and creed, uniting us in our shared humanity. May our decisions be infused with the spirit of love and understanding, uplifting, and empowering every resident of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. May be seated. And Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the February 13, 2024, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on February 8, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what is our first item of business?
Presentations and appointments. For the agenda preview, I will state that there will be no meeting, regular meeting for the February 20, 2024 of the city council. However, there will be a special city council meeting, council in your neighborhood, to be held at the Brand Studios at 6:00 PM.
Good, thank you. Hope everybody can come, everybody that's watching, come to Brand Studios. It's a beautiful location, and it'll be a more informal setting for us to meet. And do we have the items that we'll be discussing? Is that something that we're ready to share?
Yes, for sure. Mr. Mayor, we have three items that would be of particular interest to the neighborhood, starting with upgrades to the brand hiking trails. All these three items will be presented by Public Works. Next is an update on the North Brand Demonstration Project. This is a project, as you know, north of Glen Oaks Boulevard, a quick build project, as well as updates on the indigenous tree ordinance and the Public Works Department's effort in increasing the tree canopy in the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian.
Have we reached out to the neighborhood to notify them like we did for the previous meeting?
Yes, Councilmember Asatrian, that had become our standard since the last time that we had, as you noticed, we had a better turnout
We did.
because of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is next?
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
All right, can we have a motion? It looks like we only have minutes to approve.
I'll move second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Asatrian, seconded by Councilmember Divine. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian,
Yes.
Divine,
Yes.
Kasakian,
Yes.
Najarian,
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. And next?
Next are city council and staff comment.
Sorry about that. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Najarian, nothing for you today?
Nothing for me.
Number Divine?
I just want to tell everybody to have a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow, and please spread the love to everyone you see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian?
I'll hold mine until next week.
You'll hold yours still next week? Okay. And Councilmember Kasakian?
I'll say happy Valentine's to everyone for tomorrow. But I do have one item I want to have staff to comment on. This weekend, I think a lot of us were informed of some work being done in Montrose at one of the marquee, I think storefronts on the intersection of Ocean View and Honolulu. I'd like to know what transpired and what is happening with that, so the public is aware of it as well.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Kasakian, for bringing that up. As you know, as you indicated, there was some illegal construction work that was going on at the former FaZe store. And as soon as I was informed, we sent the police officers out there. They issued a stop notice, stop work order, and shut down the work. There were workers who were working on the exterior of the building, as well as what it appears to be some interior work. Obviously, they don't have approval to move forward. They have submitted an application, hasn't been approved, and our code enforcement is aware of it. We have inspectors going out there on a daily basis just to make sure, and we'll keep you, give you an update as we find out what the status of their application is.
Okay, well, I do want us to make, I want to make sure that they are following all of our rules and guidelines, and that everyone follows our guidelines, especially for what days are allowed to have construction done in the city. And I appreciate our police responding right away and putting a stop to it. The age of that building, just, you know, if the displays and the mannequins were any indication of it prior to when it went out of business, not much has been changed in that store since its founding. So I do have concerns about some toxic materials. There could potentially be asbestos. So any work done, especially on a Sunday, on a busy day when a farmer's market is happening and people are walking down that block, we need to be on top of and make sure it stops. So thank you for the update.
Yeah, on that, and I do appreciate the police department and staff, you, Mr. Golanian, 's response to that as soon as you heard it was happening. But what are the consequences for somebody who does something that is that egregious? You know, just coming out, no permits. I wasn't there, but I saw videos, extremely dangerous situation with people with families walking right next to the site, and they're throwing stuff from the roof down to the ground. It's unbelievable that somebody would do that. I would hope that, you know, of course, we want them to have permits and do everything right, but there should be some consequences for this type of behavior. We can't allow this in Glendale.
Right, absolutely. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, of course, these types of activities, especially on Sundays, especially on Super Bowl Sunday...
During the farmer's market?
Farmer's market. It was extremely unsafe operation for the workers as well as the pedestrians, and they will be dealt with, I assure you, accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I do have three policy-related points to bring up. I thought since it's a short meeting, I would take this opportunity. So let me start with a bill called numbered AB 1033. It was signed into law last fall by the governor. It's intended to increase opportunities for entry-level homeownership. What it does is it allows property owners to build an ADU and sell it separately from the main house, following the rules that apply to condos. So it would, one would have to go through setting up homeowners' association agreements for how the cost of common areas like driveways are going to be handled. And it would have independent property taxes, similar to a condo, would have its own address, et cetera. This law was passed, it's not binding on cities, it's something that cities can opt into. And I was approached by a resident who is interested in doing this, and I thought it was something that would be good for us to take a look at. So if that could come on the new business agenda, I suppose that's in two weeks, I'd like to see if it's not a heavy lift for us to opt into that program, probably not something that we'll see a lot of, but, you know, make these options available. So that is number one. Number two is a subject we've talked about before, which is solar sizing, how big of a solar system you can put on your rooftop. So I think this council and probably many people in the public know that we've had for many years a policy that says you can build a system only up to 110% of your historic energy use. If you were to say, "I'm planning to buy an electric car, I'm planning to do this," that doesn't count. They only look, we only look at the last year of your energy use, and we say you can build 110% of that. More recently, we lifted that requirement somewhat for systems up to 10 kilowatts. And we say up to 10 kilowatts, no questions asked, you can build it, we're not going to look at your history, but above 10 kilowatts, so some of the larger systems, and there probably not going to be a lot of them, but we're still applying that 110% rule. We had a resident who is looking to build a 15-kilowatt system, and she's been struggling for quite a long time to get that approved. And she came in and we met with GWP, and I was interested not just in helping, you know, make sure that she could do what she needs to do, but thinking about the policy issue is why we limit the size of these projects. And I would like, I know that we have E3, which is going to be coming back to us in the next few months with a report on our solar penetration goals,
Yeah, 10%.
Right? I would like to, at that time, to see if we could consider freeing up this rule so that we will allow larger systems, maybe up to 150%. One of the, one of the reasons I think that we hesitate on this is kind of maybe a little esoteric, but if you build a system and it's more than the energy that you yourself use, at the end of the year, you might have a credit, right? And what our rules say is you could either roll that over, or you can cash it out. And the price that we, or the rate that we applied to cashing that out is something called the feed-in tariff rate, okay? And it's about, I know it's now somewhere plus or minus 10 cents a kilowatt hour. That's a lot higher than our costs. I think our costs would be 3 to 5 cents, or something like that, depending on circumstances. So to us, it's, you know, there's, I guess there's a fear, I think it's a little bit unfounded, but there's a fear that somebody might build a big system and then monetize it by selling all this excess power. So what I would like us to consider is cutting that compensation rate. I don't think there's any reason why we need to compensate for excess generation at that very rich rate. Let's bring it closer to what our wholesale market is, or what our costs are. I think if we do that, then we should have no concern about people oversizing it. I don't think people will oversize unless they really do intend to put in, you know, EVs or an ADU or electrification. So that's, I just wanted to kind of lay that out for my colleagues' benefit, but I'm not going to ask for anything to come on the new business agenda, because I know this item is coming back, but I wanted to just explain that. Last one is, and I hate to bring this up, but when we talked about rental rights, our rental rights program, we agreed to exempt properties that are four units or below from the rent eviction protections. I didn't realize, again, I hate to be bringing this up, but I didn't realize that, again, with that, we actually inadvertently rolled back an existing protection that exists for people that are in triplexes and quadplexes. So right now, under our previous ordinance, if you're in a triplex or a quadplex and you are told to leave because there's going to be a renovation, you are protected. Now, with the new, with the change we made, we've actually reduced protections on people in those two situations. I don't know what the number is, how many thousands of units, but it is a concern, partly because I don't know that we really understood we were doing that. I didn't. And I don't know if any of us understood that we were rolling back existing rules. Also, you know, one resident pointed out to me that we have in our housing element Program 7B where we've committed, and I'll, I think this is a quote, "to prevent practices that increase or enable displacement of residents." I think you could argue that by doing what we've done, we've actually increased the likelihood that somebody will be displaced. Maybe it's, maybe it's an argument that's not 100% clear, but I would like us to relook at that, because I'm uncomfortable with what we've done, and I think we need to fix it.
Mr. Mayor, you explained it to Paula Divine, who was confused on it. I mean, it's on tape. You explained it, and I made a compromise to that,
I know.
and you had pulled it that last meeting? Now you're going to pull it again and come back? I'm opposed to that. That's just not proper way to run a meeting. If you were confused, you're certainly not one shy with words who asks for clarification. You're certainly one not, you're certainly one who doesn't, who has connections to the rental and tenant union community. I'm opposed to bringing this back again. That's just, that's just unfair, it's unnecessary, and that was a compromise that we had planned. Now, you know, you're moving the goalposts back. I hope nobody supports that,
Well, let me...
because we went through this, Councilmember.
Let me just say, I did, I did express clearly that my intent was that we don't roll back any existing protection. I said that, I know multiple times, and I don't think staff explained to us that that's exactly what we were doing. So I wasn't aware. I don't know if you were aware of that. I don't know if the rest of my colleagues were actually aware that that's what we ended up doing. That's my concern, is I think we did something inadvertently to reduce protections that exist today, or did exist before we passed that ordinance. If everybody believes that they knew that that was what we were doing and they all signed on to it, then fine. I didn't know that.
I mean, this was the whole mom and pop discussion, where we said, you know what, 20 units, no way, you can't go there, even nine units, there are so many buildings that have nine units. And the definition that we kept coming up with was four and below, and that's where we landed. I compromised on that, in good faith, to be, you know, a productive and bipartisan member of this council. Now to come back and say, oh, no, no, what we did, forget it, we want to go back even further, I just don't think that's fair.
I understand.
Is this the time you want to have this?
Yeah, I don't think we can have this conversation.
We'll bring it back next week. The council will have to decide whether or not to bring it back at that time. We'll put on the, in two weeks, sorry.
Mayor, if I may, just to, for you to decide how you want to move forward.
Right.
You know, I raised concerns when that ordinance was being drafted on this dais, and the way that changes were being made. I noted that this is not how I feel comfortable making decisions, and that it shouldn't be changed on a whim, where people walk away with possibly different thoughts of what's happening. And I disagreed with the process, but I do think that all of our decisions, at least for me, was based off of, I also compromised. That's where I felt like I was coming from, because I really wanted data. I wanted the ad hoc committee to look at it. I think the reports that were being provided to us were different than what the staff was saying, and the last-minute staff report I wasn't happy with. And so, at least for me, I feel like we reached that mark last week. I'm happy for that to be looked at through an ad hoc committee, that I think Councilmember Kazakhian initiated. I seconded for that to come back, for us to look at. If you wanted to have it go through that process, then I'm happy to have it be that way.
Okay. Well, let's have a, we'll have a brief discussion in two weeks. If the consensus on council is to leave it be, or maybe relook at it in some future iteration through landlord-tenant committee, that's fine. I mean, that's the majority. It just disturbs me that, I think, I don't think I was properly advised when I made my decision. Because I did make it very clear that that was not my intent. So, all right.
I haven't said much, because I don't think we should get into a heavy discussion about this right now, but I do think a tenant-landlord committee would be an excellent place for people to consider this.
You're in your 60s now, as am I.
Meaning?
We're not as sharp as we used to be.
Well, that's probably true. I don't know. Okay, anyway, let's move on.
I'm older than you.
No, 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 we're like, we're close.
You're like a month younger than me.
We're close. Yeah, yeah, we're about the same. Okay. Staff comments?
Yes, sir. Mayor Brown, members of City Council, I have a great announcement to make. Wanted to stay, take a couple of minutes to say how elated I am to announce my appointment of Greg Fish as our next fire chief to lead our Class 1 Fire Department. A little bit about Chief Fish. He brings with him a wealth of experience and a deep understanding of our city's firefighting and paramedical needs, having previously served as our fire chief. During his distinguished 31-year career with the Glendale Fire Department, Chief Fish demonstrated exemplary leadership, progressing through the ranks from firefighter to captain, battalion chief, deputy chief, and ultimately, chief in 2015. His dedication to the firefighting service was further exemplified through his role as Fire Academy Assistant Administrator and adjunct faculty member at Glendale Community College. Chief Fish's contributions to the department have been recognized with the prestigious Distinguished Service Award. Following his tenure with Glendale Fire Department, Chief Fish continued to enrich his experience in fire management and emergency response at the Carpenteria Summerland Fire District, where he served as fire chief until his retirement on September 30th, 2023. With only one month in retirement, we were fortunate, as fire chief graciously accepted the role of acting fire chief on November 1st, 2023, at a critical juncture, bringing his leadership to our fire department once again. It is with great pleasure that we welcome, welcome back, Chief Fish to our organization and to our community. His dedication to public safety, his profound commitment to the city of Glendale, and his proven leadership skills are exactly what we need. And I'm confident he will continue to uphold the highest standards of service and professionalism that our community expects. In a couple of weeks, we'll bring an item for council to appoint him as interim fire chief while his application for reinstatement is going through purse process. With that, I ask your approval of my appointment of Chief Fish as our new fire chief.
We do have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
So move.
Hold a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council of the city of Glendale hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Gregory Fish as a fire chief for the city of Glendale, effective March 1, 2024, or upon CalPur's acceptance of Mr. Fish's application for reinstatement from retirement, whichever occurs later. This motion constitutes the written statement of recognized attainment required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
A second.
Okay, motion and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kazakhian?
Yes.
Aljarrian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
You can do a few more than a couple.
Well, you never want to give a microphone unfettered to a chief, but I'll try to keep it brief. It is the eve of the Day of Love, right? So Valentine's Day is tomorrow. I got to tell you, the reason why I came back is because of the love, the love that I have for the community that I've served for 31 years, the love of the men and women of the Fire Department, the love that I have for the people of the city of Glendale. It was kind of like a no-brainer. I mean, I hate to say it, but it's just the familiarity that I have, and the, this is the town that I basically grew up in. I got hired at 20 years old, for crying out loud, and I just had an opportunity to come in and to work in an area that I lived in, grew up, know it very well. And so for me to come back, it's just a natural fit. And my hope is, is that you all, as a council, will be happy with the work that we're doing in the Fire Department over the next couple of years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, we will be, and I think we're all, we're all very excited as well.
So since it's Super Bowl weekend just behind us, this reminds me of a current football analogy. I'm a fan of the Cleveland Browns, and our top QB went down, and we went back into retirement to bring Joe Flacco up to play, and he took that team to the playoffs. So, Chief, I think you've got it, you've got the experience, just like Joe Flacco, you've got the connections, you know the plays, and I think we're going to have great success with you again.
So you're telling me anything short of the playoffs is just not-
We won playoffs.
All right. I got it, I understand. Marching orders loud and clear.
I just want to say, welcome back, Chief. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
And I know you'll do great by the guys, so thank you.
You know, the love and respect that the men and women of our Fire Department have for you is a testament to your leadership, and I'm hoping that this new phase will bring you all closer together and take our department, who is absolutely the finest, to the next level, if it's possible for it to be that. And so grateful for your service, and grateful for you to be stepping in at this important time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
And we were mad you left anyway. I want you to know that. You know, how many years back, we were not very happy, but this makes it all better.
All right, that's what I'd like to hear. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. One more time, one more time. Okay, next item.
Next, our community event announcements. We have one speaker card.
Okay, we have Alan Durham, speaking about a candidate forum.
Mayor Botman, members of the council. First to answer Councilmember Asatrian's question. Today, the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association sent out a blast email to all of our members about council in your neighborhood next week. So we're hoping for a good turnout by the neighborhood. I just wanted to remind people that the last candidate forum will be this Thursday, February 15th, at 6:30 PM at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, 1401 North Verdugo Road, and it will be sponsored by the Ross Moyn Mountain Homeowners Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other event announcements?
The museum.
Oh, yes, okay. Well, we're kind of off of Councilmember comments, but yes. We attended a ceremony for the Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center. It was a major milestone in the project, raising the beam that will go on the top of the structure, I believe. Isn't that what that beam was? It's the, it's the kind of, is there a term for it? That type of beam?
Top beam, I think. Top beam.
Okay. So if you've been following this, it's been a project that I think was conceived something like eight years ago. We, in the last couple of years, went to a groundbreaking, we went to a ceremony when the parking structure and the ground level was completed. Now, we see steel beams going up, and we all got to sign this beam that is going to end up at the very top of the building. So it's an important step, and I made some comments today saying that there were, there have been doubters along the way that the community could pull together with the generosity needed to raise this substantial amount of money that it will take to build this. And, you know, we've been through COVID, we've been through a resumption of hostilities towards Armenia and Artsakh, and war, and catastrophes, and any reasonable person could have thought that that would put an end to the hopes for this project, but it did not. And the community, the broader community, Armenian community, as well as government leaders have pulled together and shown that there's a real commitment to making this happen. So I was proud to be there. We were almost all there, watching this important milestone. And I think we're expecting the museum to be completed at the end of next calendar year. So I think kind of towards the end of 2025 is, that's the latest I heard, probably on the optimistic side, but it's moving along, and it really, I think, will be something that will put Glendale on the map even more than it is today. Anything else you want to add?
I think you covered it all, but I just wanted to make sure everybody else knew.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, what is next?
Next is the adoption of ordinances. Item A, Public Works Regarding Adoption of Ordinance for Public and Private Indigenous Tree Protections, introduced by Councilmember Devine on February 6, 2024. One, ordinance amending portions of Title 12, chapters 12.40 and 12.44 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to update standards and implement greater enforcement mechanisms for public and indigenous tree protection. Two, ordinance amending sections 16.12.050 and 16.24.050 and 16.24.060 of Title 16, and sections 30.26.080, 30.32.160, and 30.47.040 of Title 30 to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating generally parking law tree species and consistency with existing tree ordinances. Zoning Code text amendment, case number 0003-2022. Three, ordinance amending comprehensive citywide fee schedule regarding administrative citation fine amounts for enforcement of the city tree and indigenous tree ordinances, and amending the existing comprehensive citywide fee schedule to add violations subject to fines related to enforcement of the city tree and indigenous tree ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian, will there be a report?
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of City Council. We do not have a presentation on this item. As it was read into record, it was introduced last Tuesday. This is a request to have the ordinance adopted, unless you have any other questions. Mr. Click, our urban forester, Mr. Hardgrove, our assistant director of public works, as well as Mr. Hernandez, our interim director, are available for questions.
There was one comment that I wanted to address.
Yeah, please, I was going to ask if you could.
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the introduction of the ordinances, there was a, there was a request by Councilmember Devine to add language that would require a inclusion of all development applications for sites with trees.
I was going to ask.
To include a report regarding, a report from a qualified tree expert. And so we did actually just send you additional language on that. However, we wanted to comment on it. So the most appropriate place to put that language is in Section 3040020, which was not part of the ordinance that was introduced. So we can't recommend you make, include a new section, because it wasn't part of the notice, it wasn't something that went to the planning commission for review. There was a, there was a space to put it in 3047040, and I've provided that language to you. Starts on the 10th, I'm sorry, the pages aren't numbered, but the 10th page of the revision, which would require for design review. The problem with that, in talking with CDD, is that really what we would be doing then is requiring all applications to have this tree report, regardless of whether or not they have to go to design review, or whether they're exempt from design review. So we would be significantly expanding the number of projects that would have to provide this report. And it seemed to us in the discussions we've been having, that you've been asking CDD to have, that would be a little contrary to the request to streamline our entitlement process. So what we're recommending is not to adopt the change, direct us to go back and try to find a space where it might be applicable. Another option is to include the language, but again, that's not what, I think both CDD and our office would recommend not doing that. The third option is to push this over, not necessarily recommending that either, because all these ordinances otherwise are in very good shape. So our recommendation is to adopt the ordinances as they were introduced, without that one addition, and then we will go back and try to figure out a space where that particular requirement can be included.
Okay, thank you, thank you. City Attorney, I was going to ask about that. I have it written down. Where is it? And so I appreciate that, and I hope that you will go back and find a place for that. I think it's really important to make sure that, you know, we don't have a landscape architect on the design review board, and I think that's important. And I think this would be just another little step towards making sure that the landscaping is good, correct, and well-thought-out.
Okay, is there-
Do you want me to move the-
A consensus? I just want to see if there's a consensus that we follow the city attorney's recommendation. So basically, we are going to adopt the ordinances as is, and this additional item will come back as a separate ordinance.
Correct.
With the idea that it would be applicable, assuming we agree, but it makes sense, that it would be applicable only to projects that go through design review.
If that's the council's policy direction.
Yeah, which-
Why wouldn't that be brought up as a new item, just like any other new business item? Why is this being brought up as contention to the ordinance that's in front of us today?
Because it was something that, there was a consensus, I believe, looking around the room last week, that we do include this. And so I think what staff did is they looked to see whether it can be incorporated into the existing ordinance, found that there are some issues with that, and some open questions that I think require a little bit more deliberation. So the idea is, rather than do something haphazard, we hold it, we discuss it separately.
I would, I would make the exact comment. We got policy direction from the council at the last meeting, but procedurally, we can't do it tonight, so we would follow in. We've already gotten that one step, two step out of the way on this particular item.
Okay, great.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, you're fine with that? Okay. So was that, you made a motion?
We have to introduce each ordinance at a time, or-
They've been introduced, right?
Move each ordinance at a time for adoption.
If I may-
Sure, please.
You know, I brought this up during the last council meeting. I do have concerns about the extreme fees with the larger trees that are not part of- about the extreme fees with the larger trees that are not part of, or similar or in line with anything that other cities are doing. I don't know if any of you have given additional thought, but if you are all moving forward with it, what I would like is for the fee to be taken up separately, because I would not be supporting it. And not because I don't believe in it. And the more I think about it, I have concerns about our community outreach and education component. And truth of the matter is, I don't have faith that we are doing our due diligence on that front. And I would hate to be voting for something that then results in someone unknowingly doing something like that, and then getting a $26,000 fine for cutting a tree. And so I had additional questions to our staff about this, what the process would be if someone couldn't afford $26,000. Would that mean that are we putting a lien on their house now? And that's a huge chunk to pay all at once, and I didn't have the answers for that, and I can't with a good conscience vote for that.
Okay, but we are going to take these separately.
So I would like, yeah, so if we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Item three is the fee schedule.
Yeah. So if we could take them one by one with a motion and a second, would you like to move it?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So I'll move item one, 7A1.
Okay, motion and a second. Take roll call on that, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
And I will move item 7A2, a second.
Okay, motion, second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
And I will move item 7A3.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
No.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff for a lot of hard work on this. Okay, moving on to action items. What is our first item?
Action item A, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Firefighters Association Local 776. One, resolution approving and adopting the MOU commencing July 1, 2024, and terminating after June 30, 2027. Two, resolution providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees covered by the city GFA MOU.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council. The Glendale Firefighters Association, GFA's, membership includes firefighter recruits, firefighter, fire engineers, fire captains, and paramedic roles. And starting June 27 of last year, the city has engaged in labor negotiations with the GFA negotiating team. And based on a detailed compensation analysis that included factors such as base pay, longevity bonuses, education incentives, employer healthcare contributions, paid leave, and retirement plans, the 401 and 457 plans, they ranked 10th among 10 comparable cities. But thanks to the cost of living adjustment proposed in the new three-year MOU, it'll go into effect with 5% July 1 of 2024, then another 5% July 1 of 2025, and then the last 5% July 1 of 2026. This will set them, and it'll improve their position to 5th amongst the comparable cities. I wanted to extend my gratitude for the negotiation team, including John Tectalian, Paula Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford from the city management side, as well as Ara Zakarian and his team of negotiating that have finally completed this MOU that we believe strikes a fair balance between offering competitive compensation and upholding fiscal responsibility. With that, I would recommend your approving and adopting the MOU as stated.
Okay, any questions? Any public comment? Sorry, did?
No, it wasn't a question. Just want to make the comment that I know that, you know, when we say that we ranked last out of 10 cities, those cities were not ones that we specifically picked to make sure that the ranking was such where Glendale was ranked lowest. These are comparable cities where our fire personnel are looking to, for opportunities when we are not paying a market rate, competitive salary to them. So it's not like just cherry picking random 10 cities. These are cities that are looking at Glendale's talent pool and coming after it when we don't pay our staff what they deserve. Thank you, and thank you.
So no comments? Any other questions, comments?
No, happy that we came.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, just well deserved.
Happy that we came to an agreement. Our public safety is the cornerstone to our quality of life in Glendale. We very much appreciate the hard work of our men and women firefighters, and all of the other job classifications that are involved in the department. And we're glad, very glad you keep us safe, and we're glad to keep your men and women happy.
And with that, I'll move 8A1 and 2.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay.
That deserves a clap. What's that? Oh, there was a com, okay. Well, please, come forward. Mr. Zakarian.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving us the time here. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and city council members. My name is Ara Zakarian. As you know, president of Glendale Firefighters Association Local 776. Stand before you today on behalf of the dedicated members of the Glendale Firefighters Association with a heartful of gratitude and appreciation for all of you. It is my honor to express our sincere thanks to the city council and the hardworking city staff for their commitment and support in ratifying our new labor contract. A big thank you to Paula Adams and her team. A big thank you to Jason Bradford and his team. City manager Rubik Galanian, assistant city manager John Tectalian and their staff, and our new fire chief, Chief Greg Fish. Our firefighters are the backbone of this community. They tirelessly work day and night to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents of this city. Their unwavering dedication to duty deserves recognition, and we are fortunate to have a city council here today and a city staff who recognize and appreciate their sacrifices. The negotiation process is never an easy one, as this is my, this is my second time. But thanks to the collaborative efforts that I witnessed myself from both the GFA team and the city of Glendale, we have reached an agreement that not only values the hard work of our firefighters, but also reflects a commitment to the betterment of our community as a whole. As you have witnessed, the growth in our city has had a significant impact in public safety operations. In 2023, yet again, our firefighters supported record-breaking statistics, and here's some, just to share a few. We responded to over 22,000 calls for service. Additionally, we're accomplishing and overcoming those same challenges while having the lowest ratio of firefighters to residents per capita in all of Area C, and we're proud to do it. And we're approximately 16% below average in compensation when we first started these negotiations. And that was compared, like councilmember Artik Sakian said, to the agencies that are comparable to us. This new agreement is a testament to the spirit of cooperation that exists between our union and the city council. It not only addresses the concerns and needs of our firefighters and their families, but also ensures that the vital services they provide to the citizens of Glendale remain the highest quality. Over the last 12 years, the Glendale firefighters had received an average increase of 1.1% per year. Your commitment to public safety and your understanding of these challenges faced by our firefighters are absolutely commendable. I thank you for that. We would like to extend our deepest gratitude to each city council member here today, and for their careful consideration for our proposals the last six or seven months, and for recognizing the importance of fair and just compensation. Additionally, we want to express our appreciation to the dedicated city staff, who were tirelessly behind the scenes to facilitate this whole process. The professionalism, attention to detail, and commitment to serving the best interests of our community have not gone unnoticed. And in closing, on behalf of the GFA, we extend our heartfelt thanks to all of you, the city staff, for ratifying this agreement. Your support ensures that our firefighters can continue their vital work with the knowledge that their dedication is recognized and valued. And lastly, this is personal, as a first-generation firefighter, as someone who was born and raised right here in this city in Glendale, and the person who has grown up in this chamber is right here. It's been, and now, as a labor president, I stand before you. It's been an absolute honor to serve you, the council, and honor to serve my fellow firefighters here behind me and across the city, the city of Glendale. And most importantly, it's an honor to sacrifice our lives for yours and everybody else in the city every day we show up to work, and for the rest of the people of Glendale. Thank you for your continuous support and dedication to Local 776. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Satrian?
We took a vote so quick, I didn't get a chance to say anything, but please pass on our deepest gratitude to the entire GFA team and all the, all the employees. You put your lives at risk for us every single day, and that sacrifice is not just for, for your life, but also for your families and the times that you spend away from families. It is also the health risks that you take that comes along with the jobs. I want to take a particular moment to thank the leadership today for spending significant time, I think, with each of us to educate us about what it means to be a firefighter, because I think we all have ideas what it means, but I think hearing your stories and the intricate details in which you tell it helps us become better leaders, more educated leaders, and so much easier to support. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other parting words? We've said, okay, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Next item is item B, Public Works Regarding Beeline Fixed Route and Dial-A-Ride Transit Services Contract. One, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a contract with MV Transportation, Inc., for the operation and maintenance of the city's beeline fixed route and dial-a-ride transit services in a not-to-exceed amount of $82,546,667 for a six-year term with two, two-year extensions. If the first extension is exercised, the amount will not exceed $115,485,858 for a total eight-year term. And if the second extension is exercised, the amount will not exceed $150,928,28 for a total 10-year term.
And before I turn to staff, councilmember Satrian has a statement to make.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, I have to recuse myself. I have a conflict of interest on this item, so I'll be leaving the meeting.
Is it required to say what the nature of the conflict is, or is that not necessary? Yeah, usually you would just say.
I don't know exactly who it was that.
Oh, I think it's in the, it's in the materials. It's a contribution from one of the employees of the organization that's being recommended, that's been, that has, that has not been, not been made a proposal.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, and once councilmember Satrian steps out, we can start with a presentation?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council, the recommendation to award a contract, a new 10-year total contract with MV Transportation, our current operator, to operate and maintain the beeline fixed route and dial-a-ride transit services is based on a comprehensive proposal evaluation process. And the contract includes operations, obviously, as well as pass-through expenses for major vehicle and equipment repairs, special equipment needs, fuel for the dial-a-ride vehicles, and minor service modification. With that, I turn it over to Martha Diandra, our transit manager, who has a brief presentation and the recommendation of the award.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. Tonight, we are requesting approval for the beeline fixed route and dial-a-ride transit service contract. The presentation will highlight the procurement process, the contractor selection, and final recommendation. The Glendale beeline and dial-a-ride services provide mobility for our residents, especially our transit-dependent older adults and students and employees of local Glendale businesses. The beeline fixed route bus service offers nine routes that connect riders to schools, businesses, hospitals, doctors' offices, parks, and older adult meal sites and activity centers. Glendale also operates the La Quinata Shuttle Service. The beeline fleet has 41 city-owned buses. Glendale also operates the dial-a-ride demand response para-transit service for Glendale residents that are 65 or older and persons with disabilities of any age. The dial-a-ride program also provides services to La Quinata Flintridge and unincorporated LA County communities of La Crescenta and Montrose. The dial-a-ride fleet is composed of 10 mixed fleet city-owned vehicles, including minivans and cutaways. A service contractor operates and maintains the city-owned vehicles for both the beeline and dial-a-ride programs. The service contract is set to expire on July 31, 2024, requiring a procurement to select a contractor to operate both programs. On October 10, 2023, the city council authorized the release of the Maintenance of Fixed Route and Dial-A-Ride Transit Services Request for Proposal that included an on-demand option for a timeline approved at the July 11, 2023 city council meeting. The RFP was released on October 12, 2023. The Public Works Transit Division hired a transit service procurement consultant, Dan Boyle and Associates, to lead the evaluation and the selection process. Mr. Boyle will now present the selection and evaluation process for the RFP.
Thank you, Martha, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's been a little while since I've talked to you. Probably pre-pandemic was the last time I was before you, talking about some service changes. So the contractor selection is really outlined very well by Federal Transit Administration, and there are some state ordinances requirements that we have to follow. It calls for a request for proposals. It's a competitive procurement process, and the contract is awarded based on specific criteria, not the lowest bid. It's not a low-bid contract. The FTA requires several things, as I mentioned. One of their publications talks about best value and best practices in terms of going out for a contract. The idea is to have a full and open competition, first of all, and second of all, pick the firm that will give you the best quality of service for the lowest price, at the least cost. There are many other clauses here. I can give you a FTA document reference if you want to go through them all. FTA is very specific about what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. So some of the highlights, this is different from some of the previous RFPs we've gone out for, because we're transitioning to a zero-emission fleet. And this means we'll need help with people who understand how to do that transition and bring electric vehicles online and serve the city in that way. We asked the bidders to include an assistant general manager position who would be responsible primarily for this piece of the project, and certainly looking for experience with how to train bus operators and how to train maintainers, as well as experiential electrification. As mentioned, facility maintenance costs are also included in this contract. We know that labor and benefits have increased over the years since the last contract, so we're expecting a higher cost to come in. And we included an on-demand service option. This, I believe, was at the request of council. On-demand services such as taxi, or Uber, or Lyft offer another piece of the transportation puzzle, if you will. So we expressed this in the RFP to make sure we, we were, and we got people who had experience with this and could help us if we decide to get down this path. The process, we issued the RFP, and we conducted pre-proposal meetings virtually. They were not mandatory. Nine firms attended those. We also had a facility and fleet inspection on-site here. Eight firms attended in person. We responded to 279 questions, which sounds like a lot, but is not unusual for a project of this size, and issued two addenda to try to clarify issues that were not clear in the RFP, or that were requested to be clarified in additional. We received four proposals. We received four proposals, one from Keolis, one from MV Transportation, one from Southland Transit, and one from TransDev. For the evaluation, we selected a panel of industry transit professionals. I was honored to be on that myself. I've done work with transit contracting. I've published a TCRP report on bus service contracting in the transit industry. I was joined by folks from the Antelope Valley Transit Authority, the general manager, the head of Beach Cities Transit in Redondo Beach, a person who works pretty high up in Los Angeles Metro in the contracted section, contracted services section, I'm sorry, the head of the Pasadena Transit, and of course Andrea, Martha DiAndrea, the city's transit manager. There's a lot of experience on this panel with contracted services. Many of these folks contract services themselves. So we conducted pros and proposer interviews. We evaluated and scored the proposals based on evaluation criteria established ahead of time, and we averaged the individual scores to provide the final ranking. Here you see the averages and the summary and what the evaluation criteria are. The most points were given to the price proposal, to the technical capacity and operations, and for the experience references and performance record. As you can see, 20 for the price and 15 for the others. You see the average scores for all four, and the total, MV Transportation had 103.75 points out of a total of 110, the highest of all the proposers. I will say also, all six of us who were rating scored MV the highest. There was unanimity among the panel in that they had the best proposal for the most reasonable price. They bring a, a lot of experience in Glendale. They have worked here for the city for a long time, and they clearly have a great knowledge of the city. Strong employee relations. They had a letter from the union suggesting that the city take this, their proposal. I have never seen that in, in my years. That, that certainly made an impression on me, that they've built a relationship with the staff that works for them. And in my experience, I would say that that's a key aspect to having a good contractor and a good contracting experience. Their safety and training programs are very strong. MV operates the most electric bus fleets in the United States, and they're committed to providing operational support and maintenance training as we move forward. They are the incumbent contractor. They've operated the Beeline for 22 years and Dial-A-Ride for seven years after multiple competitive awards. They have been a really good partner in providing transit services. It's a local team and employees committed to serving the public. Forty-three of the current employees have been here for at least 10 years, serving Glendale. And the corporate team is accessible and responsive to needs. I know a lot of people in the transit industry, so I called a few folks who have done contracting, asked, talked about, you know, what their experiences were with the various firms. And what I came away with was that now the corporate team is almost as important as the local team. The local team, the people you're going to see every day, but especially as we go forward with increased technology and electrification, the corporate team is here to provide that support. So most of the people I talked to said now they rate the corporate team equally with the local team. And it's a strong corporate team. They provided cost discounts to the city in the past when we hit a recession and, and we needed to roll back costs. Certainly through COVID, their, their instigation of safety measures and cleaning procedures and keeping the workforce intact during the pandemic was, was key. As a matter of fact, we are the only agency in this region that has a full workforce, including drivers, operating services without cancellations or disruptions. I'm active in the American Public Transportation Association. I'm the past chair of the Committee on Transit Operations Planning and Scheduling. We sponsor our workshop every year, and the last two years, the biggest issue has been, how can we retain our bus drivers? How can we get new bus drivers? How, we can't put out the services we're scheduling. That has not been a problem here in Glendale, and that impressed me very, very much. Here we have the cost presented, the summary of the survey, the year-by-year cost, the six-year subtotal. The six-year base term total, MV is the lowest cost by about $10 million. If you take out the, the startup costs, it's still lowest by about $9 million to their next closest competitor. And when you include these extensions in, the 10-year total, $147 million is over $20 million less than the next most, next proposer's lowest cost. So the, the cost was the lowest, and we felt the value is the highest. I think I will turn it back now to Martha to finish up.
Thank you, Dan. So we were the internal audit, the city's internal audit began an audit of our Beeline contract a few months back, and they have finished their audit and made some recommendations to help us improve our contract administration. And so some of the items that we are able to include in this contract because of the timeliness of the audit, we have a paperless maintenance system, Zonar fleet management, including pre-trip inspections and maintenance work orders to improve maintenance tracking and oversight. We've clarified conflicting sections such as out-of-service vehicle criteria to be used by our contractor and our third-party fleet inspector. We've added monthly and yearly checklists to ensure contract compliance, such as minimum staffing levels and employee certifications. And on our side, we've improved documentation of liquidated damages that are waived or imposed. After following the City Council's July 11, 2023 RFP-directed timeline, hiring of a transit service consultant to aid the transit staff in the evaluation and scoring of the proposals that use the Federal Transit Administration's best value selection process, staff recommends awarding a six-year plus two, two-year extensions contract to MV Transportation, Inc. to operate the Beeline Fixed Route Bus and Dial-A-Ride Paratransit Services and maintain their fleets. I'm available for any questions.
Very good. Good report. Thank you. Very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Both of you. Any questions?
So my question is a, a simple, so this is for an actual 10-year contract with the extensions? If, will, will we be asked at the end of the first six years whether to extend? Or is that going to be automatic because of this contract?
I believe.
So typically.
There are options?
There are options.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
We will be, it will come back to us in six years to decide whether we want to extend.
I think that's.
Any other questions?
We have to clarify that I believe it's an automatic extension unless the city.
Provides notice.
Right.
Right.
Oh, wait.
So explain that?
Yeah, yeah.
Say that.
Let's make sure we're crystal clear.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council. So it is a six-year definite term, and the city has the option to exercise the subsequent two terms. However, we wouldn't be going back to council. And those terms would not, would only be not exercised if we give note, if we, if the city gave notice.
So I think the idea, the idea is it tended to cover the 10-year period, but if there are challenges that present themselves within that initial term, then it's something the city would consider and possibly bring back to the council if it becomes a prominent, you know, prominent issue.
So staff, if staff sees a problem?
Or, you know, anybody, I mean, community council members say, hey, it's not working out.
Right, right, right.
We'd like to have a discussion.
Then it will come back. Okay.
Thank you. I do have, you have a question, then I'll.
No, so I just want to confirm. So when we say it'll have on-demand Dial-A-Ride, then people will be able to call? Someone's going to come and pick them up? It's not in advance, like they have to make a reservation or request a day ahead of time?
Correct. So MV is proposing using Silver Ride, which is a organization or a company that is drug-tested. Their employees are drug-tested since this is a federal procurement, and they will be available.
That's great. I really appreciate that. All right, good. And then, you know, unrelated to this, you know, given the, the scope of the service, I am curious to know if, you know, for, for the big investment that we make, do we know what it costs the city per rider and user of public transit? Can, I'd like, I'd like staff to give me an update on that figure. And I was just talking to Councilmember Najarian before as well. In terms of the large buses that we have that sometimes people notice are not always full, like what are our alternatives? What type of other vehicles could we potentially use that would maximize the amount of money that we spend for the public that is using the transit? So I'm fine with this report. I appreciate it. I appreciate staff's due diligence and the completeness of, of the process this time. But I do, and I, I would like to know more about that. If there is, you know, given the, the vehicles, what was it? Councilmember Najarian, the size of the buses?
Well, we use 30 footers now, correct?
We use, we're buying 35 footers, 35 foot. There is only one 30-foot electric vehicle, and it's by BYD. I think they're called Ride Now, but we're waiting to see if they can become federally compliant. So.
I mean, ultimately, I'd like our, our buses to run more frequently, run later. I mean, all of those contribute to people getting out of their cars and a sense of place and community that uses more public transit. I just don't want to run large buses for routes where the ridership may be not to the capacity of a 35-foot bus. So, you know, for a future discussion or something to help educate me on, I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Don't we, Mr. Galian, or maybe you know, don't we have a report coming at some point soon looking at optimizing our, our bus services?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff's working on a route analysis report. I'll come to council.
Okay, so that might be a good opportunity to talk about this kind of thing. The costs, you know, different routes, what they're costing us, what the ridership is, and these options. Okay. I do have for, oh.
Let me just ask a question. So in the event that we do decide to make some changes either to the equipment or to the routes, is the contract flexible to incorporate those charges, either up or down, or whatever?
Correct. There is a section in the RFP that allows us to increase service and to decrease service within the, the cost per hour. And, and there is actually a separate marginal cost if we add more service, if we want to add more service.
Okay. Let me ask the public speakers to come forward, starting with Thomas Lancaster.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you all for allowing me to come up and share. It's my first time doing this, so I'm a little nervous. Don't be. I, I moved to Glendale in 1968, Davenport, Iowa. Been a Glendale resident pretty much ever since. I love Glendale. I love the community that MV Transportation serves. I, I'm a Beeline operator. I also drive Dial-A-Ride when asked or needed. I was in Oceanside, North County. I was introduced to MV. I became an MV family member April 3, 2017. I drove Flex on the Marine Corps Base. Did that for three and a half years alone with Lyft. Then pandemic hit, and things happened where, you know, the ridership there kind of, okay, I'm sure you all know. So anyway, long story short, I decided to go Breeze, and that's when I became a big bus operator. So I do a little of it all. The thing is this, I came up here May 22 and joined the MV team here, my family here, of last year. I've had an excellent experience with MV. They have shown me a lot of love and respect. I love them. There hasn't been a time where I have gone to any of their doors with William, our GM, Nestor, our safety and training manager, Eric, our ops manager. And by the way, with Nestor as our safety and training manager, the safety meetings that he holds are phenomenal. And I'll tell you why for me, because for me, when he presents those meetings, it actually knocks me right back out of my complacency and puts me back in perspective. And I see things, and it's like I do this for real in real life, and it's great, you know? So there hasn't been a time where I have knocked on any of their doors that they never refused me. They dropped whatever they were doing and addressed my questions and concerns. And who does that, you know, and I love that. Except for when they were in a meeting, of course, you know? But in all honesty, I would really love to see you guys award us the, the contract.
Thank you. Time is up. All right, thank you. Gerardo Herrera.
I'm going to say a couple of words before I go to sleep. I've been, I've been working like bus, bus driver for 23 years when MV came. And I was here 20 years ago, and I said a little speed with the mayor. We were given a good service, but we need new buses. So he said, well, let's see what we can do. So after five years, I was so happy. We got new buses. We got a new building. We got a new company working with us, MV. Very nice people. I respect them. I learned a lot of things about them, respect people. I love my passengers. I try to be on time, but sometimes it's hard because the traffic's too much. But we're trying to do our best for Beeline, and I'm happy working with Beeline. Very happy and happy with, with MV. That's all I can say. Oh, and thank you again for the new building that we have. Before, we used to have an old one. Now we feel better than today. Thank you, you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Judy Smith.
Hi, good evening, everyone. To the Honorable Mayor Brotman and all council members, my name is Judy Smith. I'm a senior vice president for MV Transportation, and I'm very honored to be before you tonight. This is just a little tidbit of the team that we have at our Glendale facility. They're so dedicated and, and to, to what we do. And we're very honored to be before you, to get this award. We really appreciate the opportunity for the many years that we worked on this contract. I recall 22 years ago, I wasn't working on, I was with MV, but not on this project. Glendale was our second contract in Southern California. It was a huge deal for us as a company. And so this, this division holds a special place in our hearts as a company. As you can see, we've been back and forth. We want, we want to win this contract, and we have a great team, and we're the best. We feel that we are the best suited to take you into the, to the future. You will see in our, the report, the electrification plans. Our company has developed our internal teams to help support through that process. So we feel we're your, your best partner to take you into the future, not only for what we've done in the past, but into the future. So I just want to thank you again tonight. We're honored to be here, and we hope that you award the contract to MV Transportation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I have Scott, I can't pronounce your name, Szkowski? You're going to have to correct me. You'll let us know when you come up here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Scott Saznowski, I'm executive vice president and chief sales officer for MV Transportation. And Judy and the, and the team really covered how appreciative we are of, of you all and the consideration you're offering us tonight to continue to be your transit partner moving forward. We'd just like to comment as well on the depth and, and robustness of the process that the staff and your independent advisor conducted. It was excellent and frankly informative for us to see a process like that. So thank you. So thank you very much for the investment in the time and the effort to make that happen. And last but not least, I just want to offer a heartfelt thanks to the men and the women at our Glendale Division. You can tell it really is kind of a family. They get up every day to do what they do with, with passion, compassion, and urgency for the city to operate safely. And we can't thank them enough for that and what they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, are there any other questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I do, I'm just happy that, you know, we sent this back the first time, and my complaint was that there wasn't enough competition in the RFP. And I think the, the four firms that did apply are respectable, serious firms. Some nationally, actually, I think they're almost all nationally operating. So I'm satisfied with the results of this.
Motion, anyone?
Go ahead, do you want to move it? I'll move eight, B one.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Assadurian, Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Broadman.
Yes, thank you very much. Look forward to continue to working together. Okay, what is next?
Next, our oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
We have several cards.
Any more coming? Okay, well, we'll start with Alan Durham.
Mayor Broadman, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. Bear with me, this is a technical issue, so I'm gonna have to read a lot. But I want to speak on Measure A, ballot Measure A, about a council ordinance which would govern contracts and bidding. As soon as the ballots hit people's mailboxes, things started popping up on Nextdoor. You know, what, what is Measure A about? I hear about outreach, and I haven't missed a council meeting in person in eight months. And even I looked at the language and like, I don't remember really hearing this sort of particular approach being discussed. All I remembered is on charter amendment discussions, there would be the mention of council needed more, city needed more flexibility in awarding certain types of contracts to, you know, that are currently different than what's been allowed in the past. But that's not really what Measure A says. And I started getting inquiries from people who I think are pretty engaged in the city. So I don't think Measure A is very clear. I had to go back to previous council videos, read staff reports, which had a lot more information, and actually read the, I think it's what was adopted on December fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at your meeting, was Alternative Motion eight C one that was passed unanimously. But it's not until you look at that red line of the city charter that you can see what's going on. Now, currently, the city charter has extensive language governing contracts. And it says, "The council shall provide by ordinance a complete procedure to ensure the integrity of awarding all contracts." So council already has the authority. Measure A sounds like, oh, it's asking for the authority to, you know, set procedures to award contracts. It already has that authority under the city charter. And what this measure does to the charter is to eliminate all of the language on the charter. It's just redlined, it's all gone, and one sentence replaces all the contract provisions in the charter. Now, Measure A doesn't let people know that. And the proposed language says nothing. The charter talks about competitive bidding when it's appropriate, when it can be waived. The council has the flexibility to not go with competitive bidding. But the new language for the charter says nothing about competitive bidding. Measure A says nothing about competitive bidding. I think Mark Garcia at one meeting said, "The charter language has been around for, I think, about eighty years." So I don't think it's been well communicated. Why? Just to add some different kinds of contracts, it's necessary to gut the city charter language on contracts. Measure A will eliminate all current language regarding competitive bidding in the city charter, with no assurance that such language will be included in any future council ordinance regarding city contracts. And regardless of the motivations by this council, you know, I'm uncomfortable seeing no competitive bidding language being included in this measure and being stripped out of the city charter. You know, you may have the best intentions, but ten years from now, it'll be a different council. You know, do we trust them? And competitive bidding in the charter can always be waived if the city manager recommends it. So I don't see that your hands are tied by the, the language in the charter about competitive bids. Anyway, so, but I haven't talked to one voter who understands what Measure A is really about. Thank you.
Are we able to comment on some of these points?
I can, if you would like, I can briefly address it.
Would you? Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, we're just, I would note the, just for the record, the, the ballot question and the, the, our impartial analysis of the summary is available on glendalevotes.org, as well as the argument in favor that, that you signed on behalf of the council, Mr. Mayor. So in large part, the, the purpose of the measure is to, not to strip competitive bidding out of our processes, but to, to simplify the process and provide flexibility, as, as was noted. One, just the, the item you heard before, just before, you dispense with competitive bidding, even though the process was very competitive. And the reason for that is because unless it's awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, we have to go through that process all the time. We have experienced in my time here that that's, that process seems confusing to people. It seems like we're doing something not to, not to have a competitive process when indeed we've had a very competitive process. So that, the purpose of the measure is to address that very specific issue, to provide that flexibility in the charter and, and allow the council to establish the process by ordinance, which the only other thing I would note is, and again, it's gonna be up to the voters whether to approve this, is that, that when we looked at it, that's that process that we would, would implement via Measure A is very similar to what other jurisdictions that we looked at have. It's, if the council establishes process, the overall goal is competitive processes for procurement, when, except when there's a necessity to go in a different route. And when we dispense it, it leaves some folks with the impression that we are maybe sole sourcing it or single sourcing it, when indeed we've had this competitive process, we're just calling it something else. And so really, what we're trying to do is allow the council to adopt more modern contracting processes. Happy to answer any other questions, but that's, that's the, the gist of it.
Okay, I think that's, that's fine for now. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Durham. See, what do we have? Tony Passarella.
It's been a while. Been a while. Good evening, Mayor Broadman, council members, staff, and viewing public. Tony Passarella, thirty-six-year resident, CDE of Glendale. Just came from the school board, and I thought I'd double down, see if I had a chance here to come and do my little talk without waiting too long. Upside-down clown world award in cooperation with truth, free speech, and common sense. This participation trophy is being symbolically awarded to the progressive Democrat Party who directed and participated in the ABC-produced Upside-Down Clown World hit piece on the steps of the Glendale City Hall in a pathetic attempt to demonize Jordan Henry, Anita Karpekean, and the whole of the parental rights movement. This trophy is a seven-dollar item I picked up at Party World. Generally, this type of trophy is a participation award given to, for example, a last-place five-year-old soccer team or basketball team. So without naming names, you know who you are. I am closing with the now-famous words of Councilmember Ara Najarian's amazing sister, Maro Yakubian. If you are at this event, shame on you.
Hi, I'm Karen Quack. Earlier today, I was at the House of Labor with school board candidate Neda Farid, and she spotted a stack of these signs in the corner. As soon as I saw it, it's like, that's fabulous, I need to have one too. Because it shows that how many people in L.A. County are living in poverty and how many are rent burdened. That what I told the L.A. Federation of Labor was that renters' issues are workers' issues, and workers' issues are renters' issues. But I didn't need to tell them that, because here it is in green and white. They already knew it. And it's fabulous to have as an ally on this issue the most powerful voice for labor in L.A. County. Thank you very much. I just wanted to see that.
Okay, should I start at the time? Is that part of your comment?
Greetings, city council members, Mr. Mayor. As you see, this is my house. As you walk in, there's been water that has leaked into my house, and that's the lamp that has turned into an aquarium, sort of. And this, you can see it in this video right here. The construction is in this, on the second floor, but as you can see, my house has been filled with this much water. It was only because of God's mercy that the lamp did not explode, and I'm alive to come stand here in front of you and present you with this video. They claim that this damage was caused by the severe rain. However, I've lived in this apartment for about twelve years, and the rain never caused this issue before. I'm unsure of the quality of the work that has been done upstairs, but I can guarantee you that it has damaged the, it has caused damages, as you can see. Imagine just by how much water was in that lamp, the amount of water that has been filled in my apartment as well. If you come to my place of residence right now, you will see that all the walls are still wet, and I've been breathing in the humidity caused by it. This is not only my complaints, but there are two other residents, a total of three, that have the similar issue that is going on. And as you can see, this is the other unit that has been also damaged. I want to know who's gonna be able to provide us an answer for this? Who's gonna be responsible for the damages? As you watch these videos, I want to express my gratitude for the vouchers that you have presented to us. I'm not a driver, and currently, the church is close by, the doctor's office is close by, and all the other amenities also close by to me. If I get Section Eight in a different location, this might constitute an issue for me and the other residents who might not be able to commute to these areas. And I would like to request from you to become the middleman between us and the landlords to resolve this issue. We have endured many mental challenges during the past few months, and we want the landlord to fix these apartments so that in the future, we can, we may be able to return via Section Eight. Please get that response from the landlord, so we know what we can do in the future. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Mr. City Manager, was, I thought last time we were told about all these leaks that Mr. Calvert was gonna send out the inspectors to take a look. Did he do that? Was that done? And what was the consequence?
Councilmember Devine, member of the city council, I am quite certain it was done. I don't know what the results were, but rest assured that our inspectors know what measures to take to prevent damage to the neighboring units while construction is happening.
Right, and if we, if they get Section Eight vouchers, there's no guarantee that this apartment owner will take them, accept them.
Correct.
You know, it's, and that's out of our hands.
Correct.
My mistake, sorry. Greta Sargasian, not here. Okay, Leana, you're Leana, right? Harunakian, okay.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, council members.
We are here, we are present here more disappointed, and We are here, we are present here, more disappointed, and we're losing hope in the fight that we have been going through in the past few months. My main point today is that during the last meeting, we saw how Mr. Mayor was more with the residents' side. And he was basically supporting the residents' side due to the eviction based on renovations. But now, I see that your point of views and your laws and ordinances are more favored towards landlords? And it's more about who qualifies to receive the eviction fees and the moving fees? And which landlords are classified as mom and pop or differently? It's true that this amount and these considerations are important for us in case in the future we are subject to evictions. But now, we're more concerned about the due date of March 16, which is the last date where they will be able to evict us. And we request, and we highly request that you issue an emergency moratorium to put a hold on this. I believe that it's not only us, but there's many other people also who are facing evictions, and we kindly request to put this emergency moratorium in place to help protect us and those individuals as well. And as Councilmember Divine first mentioned, too, what are the rules and regulations placed on landlords that qualify them to evict tenants based on renovation purposes? To my understanding is, if landlords can fix those apartments while individuals are still living there, I'm sure there is a way to do it, but if landlords are using the said renovations to evict individuals from their houses, then this basically means that those landlords are just looking to make profit out of these sales, and they're not looking out for their tenants. We would like to ask if there is a way we can ask for an inspection or somehow to prove that the building that is under the renovation notice, to be proven to that it deserves to be renovated, that there is enough proof to be provided to us to tell us that this place is uninhabitable and needs to be renovated in order to have a just cause for renovation, for eviction, I apologize. And please do not offer the landlords the opportunity to make this unjust profit through this program. This is a fake reason for landlords to commit.
Please stop. Do emergency moratorium due to renovation, please. We don't have time. And also, we don't have lawyers to protect us.
The legal neighborhood services that you had recommended for us has not been of any help. They have basically opened up different cases for each one of us, and they haven't contacted us ever since. Now, we're concerned that on March 16, they're going to come and place an unlawful detainer on the doors and remove us via the help of law enforcement. And every lawyer we've tried And then, every lawyer we've tried to approach as a whole building, they've told us that they do not work for the tenants, they work for the landlords.
Even individual, even for each family, they don't do for tenants.
And they do not present individuals or tenants, they only work for the landlords. And we believe that City Hall is the only one that can help us with the right and just laws so that we don't have to apply for lawyers. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the phone? Two, okay.
Our first caller is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Good evening. So, my name is Fernando Roldan. Would I like to speak with, really quickly, with the mayor and the councils regarding AB 557, which eliminates the sunset date and date for Assembly Bill 361. The reason why is because 361, after the pandemic, was used, AB 361 was mostly used for some of us who are disabled to be able to participate in teleconference. I'm asking, as a Glendale resident, and I'm asking my mayor and members of the council to talk to the state so some of us who are disabled will have the chance to participate in some of these, like these meetings, either on the phone or on video, or on video, whether it be on YouTube or whatever the case. I think the state is thinking about really eliminating that, AB 361, and we, the disabled, need that. I spoke with some people on access services, which is the paratransit services that I use to get around, and they are really willing to fight this. And I, you know, I told them that they, and that we all need to speak to our assemblymen and state senators to make sure that some of us who are disabled won't have the hassle of being, going to these meetings with lack of transportation or because of our disabilities. I'm asking my mayor and councilpeople, please, help us, you know, stand with us, especially in this election year, this is very important for us, and I do ask that the disabled vote is important just as well. And as far as the whole situation with the apartment rents, I mean, I have to agree with a lot of people, you know, don't let the landowners get away with it. And the only reason why I say that, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, because, you know, as a person with a disability, it's very hard to find apartments these days that are accessible towards my needs or to any needs here in the City of Glendale. It cannot happen. That's all I ask. It cannot happen. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Greg Astorian. Greg, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Brotman and members of the city council, my name is Greg Astorian, I'm calling on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors. Two weeks ago, Mr. Brotman, you agreed to exempting nine units and below from the rental rights program. When it comes to major renovations, not rent-based evictions, last week, you changed your mind, and your colleagues bought into it, stating tenant protection, and you reduced that exemption to four units and below. The prime qualification and definition of mom and pop housing providers. This week, yet again, you want to change the exemption to two units and below. I mean, I understand we are entitled to change our minds, but this doesn't send a warm-hearted message out to folks that a council can change its mind on a policy issue three times in three weeks. What about the protections for folks that own three and four units? Again, this is about major renovation, not eviction based on rent. You have only evidence of two or three buildings, at least, whenever I've asked this council, that's what I have walked away with. Two or three buildings amongst 50,000 units that have applied for and are doing the renovation evictions, hardly enough to base and build a policy that covers an entire city. But be as it may, the three and four-unit owners, Mayor Brotman, are also your constituents. What about their protection? I think you should keep the compromise that you made on February 6th, because I believe that's the fair thing to do. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
And that's all.
Okay, that's it. All right. What is next? Is it adjournment? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:56 PM.